Everybody, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order. Please stand as you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under one principle, with liberty and justice in common.
Alright, thank you. Jenny, if you could take the role.
Biker, you're Forsterling.
Here.
Hartwig.
Here.
Henigan.
Here.
Jaime.
Here.
Patrice.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here.
Alright, if we could start with an update from our superintendent.
Sure, just a couple of things. We just wrapped up our school year on Friday. Was able to be at all three buildings for a little bit and there was, you know, the palpable energy on Thursday with the majority of the kids and then again on Friday, so I think it was a good close of the year. I know everybody was excited about the end of the year festivities and the recognitions and the celebrations for our retirees. As you can see, we had two administrators retiring. We were able to celebrate Sue Mueller today during our end of year district meeting. Sharon was not able to be there, but during the building celebrations, the buildings were able to celebrate all of our retirees, our teachers and our support staff. So really great end of the year. I'm happy to announce that I was able to deliver all nine hundred plus T-shirts, so they were all delivered. I think I have a couple in my car, but they're twelve monthers that I needed to change sizes and so on and so forth. But so really a great opportunity to get to know and meet everyone in the buildings. Great energy on Thursday and Friday and also from our kids, just kind of looking forward to the summer, but many of them actually shared how excited they were for this school year and that they couldn't wait to come back in the building, they were looking forward to summer. So all in all, learning, thank you so much for a great year, everyone. Principals, I know this like this end of the stretch is hard, all the festivities are great, graduation, all the things that go with that, which are ninety-five percent great and positive. It's a very stressful time of the year. Thank, I want to thank everyone and we have some future representatives, department chairs and representatives here today, thank you for a great year, for all the hard work and I'm super excited to.
And Tatiana, if it's okay, maybe for like new board members, because maybe they don't maybe not know about the initiative, like the T-shirt.
Which one? Oh, the T-shirt.
Which is so great.
Yeah, this, um, this was Mary's idea, so Mary, well, I was trying to figure out ways to be able to get out to the buildings and make, uh, make myself be more visible and be in different spaces. So Mary came up with this great idea, selfishly Mary, if I may share, she also wanted to, there is a T-shirt canon that she was dying to experiment with. So I think we combined both of those things, so we came up with a, uh, the district office team came up with a T-shirt and I think we received that team T-shirt. And we've launched a few, like did the whole T-shirt canon, is that what we call that thing? At the first institute day and then from there on, we had nominations, like each person that received one was asked to nominate someone else for, for the team, for teamwork and collaboration. So slowly but surely, had to, the last couple of weeks, took a team effort to get them ready, but I'm happy to say they were like ninety-eight percent hand delivered, so, yeah. So it's a great way to get to know the buildings, being able to identify if I'm going to go here, 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 strategize, so I have a good mental visual, uh, you know, map of the building. So all of those little things that doesn't, does not sound like a big deal, but it's a, it's a great way to get to know each community, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, um, any updates from our board members?
Okay, so I've been accepted on the board of Ed Reddville, seat that Carla vacated with her retirement, so next Monday I'll be attending my first meeting, so excited about that being responsible.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ed, thank you for taking that on, congratulations. Anyone else? Alright, I just have a couple of things, so just to kind of echo, I just want to, again, thank everyone for a great year, all of the hard work of all of our buildings, our administrators, our teachers, our staff. I know we have, you know, there were transitions coming in to this year, Dr. Bonuma started with us, lots of things happening all around us as well, and so I just want to really just just say like how proud I am of our district, how proud I am of our schools, for really just centering students, putting them first, standing behind our values, so meaningful to like be part of this district. And yeah, I'm really, I'm just looking forward to like the work ahead and just all of the passion that everyone brings, their full selves all the time, so thank you, everybody. The other thing is, I do just want to acknowledge Dr. Bonuma, so this is your first academic
Not done yet, we can't.
I know, I know, but, but, but it is the end of the year, so thank you so much. So thank you so much for, you know, even kind of take, like, that even like the initiative to meet with so many people, you know, across the district, building those relationships. I can say even from talking to like community members or community leaders, like one of the first things they mention is just how like relationship-centered you are, how you really look to, to kind of build those collaborations, you're genuine, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then my last announcement is I just want to give a quick shout out for an event happening, so the, uh, the Community Pride Event is happening in Displanes, and so some of you may have remembered, one of our really great community members' parents, Jessie Mad had won an award from the, uh, from ISB for her work on the Pride Event, her work with Speak Displanes, so that is happening on June seventh from, well, I believe it's one to five P M. at Christ, Christ Community Church, that's fourteen ninety-two Henry Avenue. So we still have a lot of really wonderful alum that are still engaged, community members that have been engaged with the schools, students that are really working to make this event a success and a, of just a welcoming moment to celebrate who people are, so thank you. Sure, it's one to five. One to five.
Christ Community?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, fourteen ninety-two Henry Avenue. Alright, any other board member comments? Alright, if none, let's move on to our education committee update with Ed.
Okay, our education committee meeting was held on May nineteenth. Members present were myself, Rebecca Henigan, Dana Jane Jaime. The meeting was called to order at four o'clock P M. There were no public comments. At the meeting, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Innovation, Dr. Sean Bestert and Mr. Dave Schultz presented an update on the work of the Innovation and Initiatives Committee. This year, the committee's focus was on collaboration between administration and District Two Oh Seven E A, discussing initiatives impacting working conditions and ensuring teacher voices are heard. Following a series of surveys given to teachers, students and caregivers, the committee reviewed the current block schedule to determine its effectiveness and whether it meets the needs of students. Surveys among teachers resulted in sixty-three percent of teachers responding believing the block schedule does not meet students' needs. Students responded favorably to the block schedule, with caregivers echoing the student responses. The next steps would be reviewing other possible bell schedules and running student focus groups, gain more specific feedback regarding the block schedule and to ensure the voices of all students are considered. The committee members present noted it was a great experience working together and thanked all of those who participated. There being no further items to come before the committee, I adjourn the meeting at four twenty-eight P M.
Thank you so much, Ed. Before we move to the next, I just, I would just ask everyone to like lift up your voices a little louder, the, the acoustics are a little different in here, so we just want to make sure we can hear.
So the audience can hear and we cannot get the air turned off, or we would have, so that that would have made it easier, so I apologize.
Got it, got it.
I know folks are having trouble hearing this.
Sorry, everybody.
There we go.
That, that, this is, this is the volume, everyone, you ready? Alright, let's go. Alright.
Dean's ready.
So Finance Committee update, Dean.
No pressure.
Okay, so we had the Finance Committee meeting on, uh, May nineteenth. Called the meeting to order at four thirty-five P M. Members present were Kelly Forsterling, Maureen Hartwig and myself. There were no public comments. We reviewed a few things, technology contracts, so attendant, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Mary Kalu ran through the technology contract renewals for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. The contracts include security software, instructional support, online learning platforms, monitoring software for appropriate student content and a purchase of an uninterrupted power source, UPS, for the Main East Data Center. The district often, most often reviews, renews for one year, only entering into longer term contracts when advantageous. We also reviewed, uh, we did a transportation review update, so following the results of the transportation survey given to families within our boundaries, the district met with pace to look at routes, keeping in mind cost and time. The vast majority of students are within point five miles from a bus stop, with the largest transportation hardship in the Harwood Heights area. Also under consideration is the possibility of the district subsidizing the cost of bus passes for our students on free and reduced lunch. The appropriate cost for student bus passes living further than a mile from their school is approximately six hundred thousand dollars annually. The intent is to begin this for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. More information will be provided in Friday notes. Resolution of prompt payment of bills. The district adopts this resolution annually due to not holding a July board meeting. The resolution authorizes payments of bills in June with approval in August. We also talked about our special milk program. This program allows reduction in cost of pints of milk. To encourage the consumption of milk, the state subsidizes the program in annual revenue to the district is thirty-five thousand to forty-five thousand dollars. Inter, intergovernmental agreements reunification. Centennial Fitness Center is the reunification site for Main South High School in the event of a school evacuation for any reason. The agreement ensures the Park District that their building will be returned to its original condition in case there is any damage during the evacuation stay. Once approved, the Park Ridge Park District, the district will work on I G As with Displanes and Gulf Main for Main West and Main East reunification sites. Huddle Agreement. Huddle provides video streaming and filming for athletic events at all three schools. The district has used Huddle for many years and is recommending a three-year renewal of, in, at a total cost of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Quest Pricing. Due to increases in labor and food costs, Quest is requesting a six percent increase, rounded to the nearest point five cents. The increases would start with the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Quest has not increased their prices since January twenty twenty-three. We adjourn the meeting at five eleven P M.
Thank you. Alright, can we get the special education program updates? Thank you.
So, um, so for those board members that are new, last year we did, um, bring an improvement to enlist Empower Ed in order to engage in a program review for special education. And really what we were looking at are those inclusive practices that we have within our classrooms, what are some of the things that we're doing well, and then what are some of the things that we need to improve upon in order to improve services for all of our students? And while this really did focus on special education, it really does look at programs and services that can help all of our students, anything from our multilingual learners, our students with disabilities, to our advanced learners, because these are practices that if they are made, if classrooms are made accessible for students with disabilities, they are accessible to all. And so we did enlist the help of Empower Ed and Kate Small, who is one of the consultants is here to be able to share a little bit about what the results of those were. I did share with the board the overall executive summary, but this will go a little bit more in depth into what the findings were from our program review and some of our plans as far as to move forward with making adjustments so that we can grow as an organization. Kate is a special education teacher by training. She has taught everything from an instructional classroom to co-taught and was an inclusion facilitator as well. She and Empower Ed really are experts in the world of inclusive practices, so I'm going to turn it over to Kate to share a little bit about the results of our program review.
Thank you, Katie, thank you so much to all of you for having me this evening. I will do my best to project, so hopefully you'll be able to hear all of this. There's some really great things to share. So first, thank you to Katie and to Ed, it's been wonderful working with this district. You've seen many of the special ed department chairs here this evening. I've had a chance to talk with any of them at length, and this has really been just a great partnership, so again, very excited to share our findings and our initiatives. So a bit about Empower Ed, we are an education consulting firm that was founded in twenty twenty by Dr. Jenna Ruffa, and her vision for this company was to really be able to support school districts and state departments across the United States in implementing inclusive change. So our team that serves as consultants are educators by trade, lots of variability in our backgrounds, but we truly pride ourselves on being school people, so we're very much aware of how a school system functions, and with that knowledge, we make recommendations that should be feasible within a district to implement. And currently, we're supporting projects across seventeen states as well as Australia. As I mentioned, we're truly supporters of the idea of progress through partnerships, so while the report we provided to the district is quite extensive, we truly hope that we can continue to support in the implementation of all of the recommendations, however it may be needed. So for the remainder of this session, it's really my goal to help all of you gain clarity as community members, what the findings were and then how those findings impact the recommendations that we made, so that the district can continue to make growth moving forward. And to start, it's important to understand the requirements that a district is held to under the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, or I D E A, many of you are likely familiar with that acronym. So the cornerstone of the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act is really the idea of the least restrictive environment, and what that means is that there's an expectation to provide students with disabilities their education alongside their general education peers. And the specific statement in the law says that we need to provide them this inclusion to the maximum extent appropriate, and the only time that we should remove students from the general education setting is when supplementary aids and services cannot be achieved satisfactorily. So the idea there is that we should always start by supporting our students with disabilities in the general education setting alongside their peers. This is data that the district is responsible to report on annually, so Katie is going to speak to what District Two Oh Seven's L R E data looks like.
So this is something that over the last several years as a district has kind of been one of our on-watch indicators for having too many students that are in more restrictive placements. It is one of the only indicators that we have been on watch for, and so over the last several years, we have really worked to try to implement some changes. So if you look at the far left, the blue, the red and the gold, um, bar graph there, the blue is us at forty-two point nine percent, that, which is shows the percentage of students that we have that participate eighty percent or more within the general education. The red shows the state average, which is fifty-four point, I think it's five up there, percent, and then the gold is really nationally, which is sixty-seven point nine percent. And so overall, you can see as a district, we are, we do have far less students that are in our general education settings compared to the state and to the national average. And so we knew that we needed to do work here, again, also because this is one of the indicators we report on, and it is the one indicator that we've kind of been on watch for, so we needed to start implementing some practices that would get more of our students into the general education. And so a couple of years ago, we did implement co-teaching, and this past year, we implemented inclusion facilitation. And we'll talk a little bit more about co-teaching and what are, what that is, as well as our inclusion facilitators, but we have made movement from the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, then we have twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, but we have made a five point four percent improvement in the number of students within the general education classroom, and so that's roughly about forty students who now are gaining more access to general education, and we know that access to general education also then helps produce better outcomes for our students. And so we are seeing more students in general ed as a result of some of the initiatives and some of the practices we've put in place, but we know that we still need to increase that even more.
Okay, so of course, we just kind of discussed how the least restrictive environment is the preference of the law, but in addition to that, we really have about fifty years of research now that supports that inclusive education is the best practice for students with disabilities as well as their general education peers, so it really is an equal benefit to those students who are receiving special ed services and students who are not. So here is just some of that research that supports the shift towards more inclusive programming. Inclusion leads to stronger outcomes for students with disabilities in the area of academic achievement, social engagement and behavioral outcomes. Schools that are implementing inclusive programming effectively really have higher achievement scores and lower disciplinary referrals for all of their students. And students with disabilities who are placed in inclusive settings have outperformed their statistical twins who are placed in more restrictive settings in both E L A and in math. So what that means is if you were to take two students that had very similar learning profiles, both in need of special ed services, the student who is placed in the general education setting with their supports delivered there, outperformed the student who was placed in a more segregated setting in both E L A and in math. So what is a service delivery review? This is a process that school districts will engage in to be able to examine their current level of supports for students with disabilities and then to explore some additional ways or new ideas that they could potentially thinking, think about to create better outcomes or greater outcomes for students with disabilities. And this is an extensive process, so the district has been quite patient with us. We've partnered together most of this last, last school year to really make sure we were able to deliver those strong recommendations, but as part of this process, we do quite a bit of data collection and then also data analysis. So we have four key categories of data that we are looking at. The first is document analysis, so we review district policy, we look at procedures, we collect handbooks that are provided to teachers, to students, to their families, and we also look at teacher schedules, how are teachers being utilized to support students? We look at master schedules, how are students being grouped together in the courses that they take? We also collect perceptual data, so this is where stakeholders have the opportunity to contribute to the review. So as part of this process, we held a number of focus groups. We had participation from administrators, from instructional staff, support staff, families, students, we also had some educational specialists, like your related service providers, who provided feedback. And a survey was administered as well, so if people were unable to participate in focus groups, they did have a chance to respond through survey. We look at district data, so this includes your demographic data, any disproportionality in terms of referrals to special education or discipline, student achievement data, and then those I D E A indicators, the things that the district is required to report under federal law. And then finally, we have a site visit. So this site visit allows consultants to visit as many classrooms as possible, to really look for trends in instructional practice here. So this site visit was conducted in September of twenty twenty-four, and ninety-eight classrooms were visited across all three high schools, Frost Academy and the Transition Program. Fifty-nine of those were general education classrooms and thirty-nine were special education classrooms. So once we have that data, what we do is we look at the numerical data compared to the narrative data, and we look at them side by side so that we're able to weigh all of those different pieces equally, and we look for patterns. So what are the things that we're noticing that are same, the same amongst all of those data points? They then inform our themes, you start to pull out some high-level themes. That then informs the findings, and our findings, of course, are aligned to the recommendations. All of the recommendations that we provide to a district are evidence-based and have research supporting them. So for you as community members, understanding inclusive change really comes down to three main categories. So when you think about making a shift and providing more equitable support for students with disabilities, you're really thinking about these three buckets here. So we have mindset, which is what we believe about students and the systems that support them, skill set, the strategies that we use to create inclusive environments, and then heart set, and this is really all of that compassion that we bring to the work. So we'll start by going over some successes that emerged from this process. And you'll see here that they are grouped into those three buckets. We have mindset successes, skill set, and then heart set successes. I'll just let you read that quickly, we will go into these more deeply in just a moment. So we'll go a little bit deeper into those strengths here. So the first, being a mindset strength, is that there is a clear commitment to supporting students with disabilities in inclusive settings within District Two Oh Seven. So one of the documents that we reviewed was the special education plan, as well as the overview presentation that was provided to all staff here in the district, and that presentation really emphasized the idea that it is a priority to support students in the least restrictive environment here within Main Township Schools. We also held those focus group conversations, and it was clear from talking with parents, talking with students, that they believe that the staff that are employed here in this district really do possess that open-mindedness to think differently about how they can support their learners. So you'll notice here at the bottom, we have a couple of quotes from focus group participants. That one on the left there really speaks to a student who has been served in a number of different settings across the district, and this parent shared that not only has this student had excellent support, but all members of his team have been willing to think outside the box. A second mindset success is that changes have already been made in this district to increase access to general education for students who currently receive special ed services. So as Katie mentioned earlier, co-teaching is a practice that the district has begun to implement, and it has grown significantly over the past couple of years. So co-teaching is when you place a general ed teacher and a special education teacher together in the general education classroom, delivering a general education course, and the idea there is that they're partnering together and they're leveraging the strengths of both educators to meet the needs of the learners in their room. So not only is this approach proven to be beneficial for students with disabilities, but also your high-achieving students who may need some extension activities in their classwork, as well as multilingual learners or students that are historically disadvantaged. So here, in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there were eighteen point five co-taught sections. The twenty-four, twenty-five school year, this grew to forty-two co-taught sections, and that is projected to double yet again for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I think it's at eighty-three sections of co-taught classes. When we think about skill set strengths within the district, part of our process is taking a look at what are known as the quality indicators of effective inclusive education and how they exist within the system that we're reviewing. So you'll notice, these eight indicators are listed on screen here. These come from the New Jersey Coalition of Inclusive Education, and they really are instructional practices that have proven to be successful for meeting the needs of anybody that has learner variability. So we're looking for things like the lesson goal being evident, students being provided with multiple access points, student-centered lessons versus teacher-centered lessons, student engagement in class, instructional scaffolds, the way that the environment is set up, and then how teachers are interacting with students. And while we look at this during snapshot observations, students also had the opportunity to provide feedback on these indicators and how they view their teachers in implementing each of these, and then teachers also had the ability to reflect on their own practice and share how they feel that they're implementing these as well. So something that was evident in reviewing all of this staff So something that was evident in reviewing all of this data that was collected is that general education classrooms exhibit some evidence of quality indicators of effective inclusive education. So you'll notice here that this bar graph is showing you all of the eight indicators, and then the red indicates partially or not implemented, and the blue represents fully or substantially implemented. So what we saw in terms of the highest rates of full and substantial implementation were the classroom environment being warm and welcoming. That was clear in ninety-two point eight percent of the classes that we visited. Class-wide procedures and routines are evident. We saw that in eighty-four point seven percent of those ninety-eight classrooms. And then the physical spaces conducive to learning. Again, that was full or substantially implemented in eighty-four point seven percent of those ninety-eight classrooms. And that last indicator there is really looking at the way that the classroom is set up, the resources that are available to students posted on the wall to help extend their thinking or support them in the learning process. And this is a very important noteworthy observation to share. So one of the quality indicators that we look at is the lesson being student-centered rather than teacher-directed. So the idea there is that we want to see students doing most of the work, and the teacher really kind of serving as a facilitator, the person who's there to support them in that learning process. You'll notice that in District 207, this was implemented fully or substantially in forty-two point seven percent of those ninety-eight classrooms. So while there's certainly room to grow there, that is a pretty significant, it's significantly higher than what we are seeing as a consulting firm nationally. So we were able to compare this to data that was collected in one hundred and ninety-one secondary classrooms in locations all across the United States. And in those instances, the average was around twenty-seven point seven percent full or substantial implementation. So the teaching that's happening here really is above what we're seeing nationally, especially at the secondary level. Another skill set strength is that students who are receiving special education services outperformed the state average for this same demographic of student on the Illinois Science Assessment. So what that means is students who have IEPs here in main township scored higher in terms of their proficiency than students with IEPs at the state level across the state of Illinois. So there was a six percent difference in the proficiency level of students with IEPs here compared to the state. So while that is a great success to celebrate, a noteworthy pause to think about is that we did not see that same success in the area of science for students that have the most significant disabilities. So those are our students that would be engaging in the state alternate assessment, which is known as the dynamic learning maps. In that case, when we're looking at that small percentage of students, zero percent of those students achieved at level three, which is really kind of the indicator of proficiency or mastery, and then zero percent of those students performed at level four, which would be exceeding mastery. There was state data that shows that students are performing in those two categories. So the district is slightly lower in terms of that very specific population of students. I believe that this is the most glaring strength that we found throughout this process. This is the heart set strength. Positive classroom environments were observed across all three high schools, Frost Academy, and the Transition Program. So what was evident in the qualitative notes that were collected through those snapshot observations is that there has really clearly been an emphasis on relationship building between teachers and students, as well as student to student. Rare is it that you walk into high school classrooms and see such positive interactions between staff and students and amongst students. So that was really great to see. That was also something that came out in those focus groups and the surveys as well. Families and students certainly spoke to the fact that they really feel welcomed here in this district. So the priority that has been placed on those relationships certainly is paying off. And again, you'll see some quotes there from students at the bottom. So now we will shift into thinking about some of the opportunities for growth that exist within the district. Again, these are broken down into those three categories: mindset, skill set, and heart set. Like we had six strengths, we also had six areas that the district should really prioritize as focus steps moving forward. Three of those fell under mindset, three under skill set, and then of course, while the heart set piece is not an immediate focus, you're already there, you have that foundation laid. It is, of course, important to continue to prioritize that. So unlocking district potential. In terms of a mindset focus, lack of access to the general education curriculum for students with disabilities may be contributing to lower rates of achievement. So while we talked about students with disabilities outperforming the state average in science, we still see some pretty significant discrepancies when we're comparing student performance of those students that have disabilities when compared to their gen ed peers. So here, in this bar graph, you will see that general education peers are in red, students who receive special education services are in green, and there is a significant discrepancy in terms of their proficiency on the SAT in both English and in math. And while some of that would be expected, when you start to see this significant of a difference, you really have to kind of look to say, okay, is the programming we're providing ensuring that they are learning all of the standards that they would need to per grade level? So another noteworthy observation here is that current programming structures that exist within the district may be limiting the ability for students with disabilities to access general education. So one of the things that we looked at as part of this process is how paraprofessional staff were utilized to meet the needs of students throughout the day. And some of the things that were recognized is that in settings where there is a lower teacher-to-student ratio, so that might be a life skills program, it might be the Transition Program, where students have more significant need. In some cases, the adult support that was available in that space was not necessarily needed based on the, the needs of the students in that moment or in that activity. So that really kind of points out needing to look at the adult supports that are available and how you could potentially use them slightly differently to increase access in general education. So again, you'll notice that last bullet point there just states that deploying paraprofessionals strategically in general education settings ensures that the support is used where it's going to have the greatest impact on student, access, their participation, and their academic progress. Another mindset focus here, something for the district to think about, is that there is a need to restructure special education programming within the district to meet students' diverse needs and reduce the necessity for out-of-district placements. This slide here shows you some of the data in terms of who is placed in programs that are offered outside of the district. So students that are supported in settings outside of your buildings here. Students with autism represent nineteen point one percent of students with disabilities in the district. However, they represent thirty-three percent of those students that are placed out of district. Students with emotional disability, again, we see some discrepancy there. Those students are thirteen point one percent of your students with disabilities. They are placed in out-of-district placements at twenty-five percent. So they're twenty-five percent of those out-of-district placements, students with emotional disabilities. We also saw some discrepancy in ethnicity. So Hispanic students represent twenty-five point six percent of all students enrolled in the district. They represent thirty-six percent of out-of-district placements. And then I think kind of most important to consider here is that male students represent seventy-three percent of the out-of-district placements that are currently, you know, students that are currently served outside of district schools. I will say, I think it's important to note here, that being a high school district, it is unique in that you don't always have control over those out-of-district placements because students are transitioning to you, and many times you're inheriting IEPs where that placement decision has already been made. However, some of the recommendations that we've provided in this report are just some ideas to how to think about programming differently to potentially bring some of those students back into the district. As part of that process, in thinking about potentially bringing students back into the district, it would be important to think about the physical space because, of course, that would mean that you're bringing a number of students back and you're attempting to serve them in programs that exist within the district or that you would potentially maybe need to think about creating in the district. So one of the things that was noticed in observing the Transition Program is that the, the age of the students, right, they're your students that are between eighteen and twenty-two years old. They're a little bit bigger. So those classrooms were just a bit crowded, especially because those students, many of them have mobility needs. So when thinking about that space specifically, there may be some opportunity there to use it a bit differently, especially as you think about potentially bringing some of those students back in. Similarly, the program that's provided at Frost Academy, from the perspective of our consultants who analyzed all the data, that could really serve as a potential step-down program for students that are transitioning back from that out-of-district placement before they would potentially return to their home building. So another mindset focus here, what we found, and this is a rare finding, we found that many of the teachers here in your district have a solid skill set in terms of understanding inclusive practice and being able to implement that. However, they might, might not recognize that skill set as being what is necessary to support students with disabilities, if that makes sense. So snapshot observations showed that many of your general education teachers have some of these foundational things that you would want to see them practicing before students with disabilities were placed in their classrooms. But when talking with them, general ed teachers really expressed that they do not feel that they have the training necessary to support students with disabilities. Special ed teachers reported feeling overwhelmed by the content knowledge that they need when they are co-teaching. And then seventy-four point eight percent of staff reported on the survey that they do feel that they're prepared to support the diverse needs of students within the district. So there was a little bit of discrepancy there in terms of what they were self-reporting versus what they were sharing in focus groups. And even after reporting that seventy-four point eight percent feeling of preparedness, that was the highest category that teachers noted as needing ongoing professional development. And then a final skill set focus here is that an emphasis should be placed on increasing student agency and the use of instructional scaffolds across all settings. So research really tells us that we need to ensure that students have choice in what they're learning and that they also have the necessary supports in place to help them get started, that provide them entry into the various activities that they do throughout a school day. And when we look back again at that graph that shows us what data was collected during snapshot observations in terms of the quality indicators of inclusive education, the lowest rates of full and substantial implementation were in students being provided with multiple access points or choices to reach the lesson goal. So that was only fully or substantially implemented twenty-one point six percent of the time across those ninety-eight classrooms. And then additionally, instructional scaffolds are evident in materials and resources. That was seen with just fourteen point nine percent full or substantial implementation. So those are certainly two focused areas to think about instructionally for meeting the needs of those diverse learners. This really lined up well with the student survey feedback that was provided. So fifty-eight point nine percent of one hundred and sixty-three students that participated shared that their teachers always or frequently deliver student-centered lessons, and fifty-six point four percent indicated that they are always or frequently actively engaged in their learning. So while these seem like they were rated relatively high, right, they're above fifty percent, these two indicators were rated the lowest based on all of the indicators that students reviewed. So again, this shows us that there is potential there to really increase that student engagement and their agency in their learning. And then finally here, we have enhanced communication, consistent practices in IEP meetings. IEP meeting facilitation and development of clear handbooks should be prioritized. So this really came from focus group conversations as well as some of that survey feedback. Parents very much expressed that they would like to see consistency in the IEP process from grade level to grade level, and they feel that that would really help them, as well as their student, to serve as meaningful participants in that IEP process. And then finally, we just, of course, looked at handbooks and made some recommendations around specific things that may need to be revised so that there's just more transparent information for all stakeholders around specific special education programming. Okay, so this leads to the recommended action. We had four main recommendations that came from this process. And while you see these four bullet points here, the report goes into much more extensive detail. So underneath each recommendation in the report, there's a series of action items for your administrators to understand and to think about how they fit within the systems that exist and what might need to be changed. So the first is to create a district-level steering committee to increase inclusive opportunities for all learners. One of the key focuses here is that that steering committee should be representative of all stakeholders. So you would want community participation in that, parent participation, student participation, administrator, instructional staff, support staff. Also, the recommendation is to really make sure that that committee is approached as not just making change for students with disabilities, but really supporting learner variability of all students. The second is to prioritize professional learning opportunities that build an inclusive mindset while also drawing parallels to the effective practices that are already being implemented within the district. So really helping teachers through all of the professional learning that they engage in see the connections between the skill set that they already have and the skills that are most effective for students with needs. The third, consider a restructuring of existing special education staff to more effectively support students in inclusive settings. So one of the recommendations here is to just look at all staffing in terms of the special ed department, both your instructional staff and your support staff, to determine if they might be able to be used differently to provide more of that access to general education. I know Katie and Ed have already undergone some training around resource mapping and how to start thinking about that process. And then finally, develop clear and consistent communication practices and guiding documents to ensure equitable access to information and to strengthen the IEP process. So again, firming up, making sure that those handbooks and those program guides are up to date and that all of the appropriate information is there so that students feel that they're supported and parents feel that they have the appropriate information. So Katie, I don't know if you wanted to speak to, I know some of this has already gotten underway.
While we just received the recommendation, some of this work has already started in partnering, especially with curriculum and instruction, to make sure that special education teachers are involved in the process of curriculum design from the beginning and alongside general education teachers, especially those that have those co-teaching partnerships, as well as looking at our professional development and what we're targeting for teachers in the next year to make sure that those inclusive practices, as well as just kind of some of the equity components continue to, continue through our professional development. So some of that is happening. We're, we're trying to, you know, be very intentional about how we are moving forward as a district so that these things aren't a separate thing, but yet it's all together as where we're moving forward. So I'm very excited about the partnership with general education so that we are supporting all of our learners.
So in terms of what's next, again, we provide a timeline to the district to really start thinking about the implementation of those recommendations. However, really the first recommendation is for the steering committee to understand the report thoroughly and then to adjust the timeline to meet the needs of the district, right? We certainly recognize that there's a lot of different things that are happening within a school district. So this may not be exactly how this pans out, but this is again, just a guideline for how to start thinking about this. So the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the upcoming year, would really serve as the planning year. So you would want all of your district administrators to understand this report, the findings, the recommendations, and you would and you would start to think about the systems changes that may need to happen for the following year to provide more access to general ed. The twenty-six, twenty-seven school year becomes your implementation year. So this is where you begin to provide more of that access. You consider the flexible special ed service delivery models that are necessary to ensure that. And then you begin talking about students with more of those significant needs and how you can create inclusive opportunities for them. And then the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year really becomes about refining, reflecting, and making sure that you are hearing the feedback from all stakeholders, families included, students included as well, to further implement this plan and the recommendations that are part of it. And then just to end here, I know that this is a lot of information and it's likely a bit overwhelming, but what we have found and what we kind of truly continue to message to any group of educators or people connected to education that we have the chance to speak with is that creating inclusive schools really is the first step towards creating a society where everyone feels seen, supported, and valued. So in the districts that we partner with, as they've shifted towards more inclusive opportunities for students, they have seen that trickle into their community as well. And just some of that acceptance and that belonging Nash naturally starts to happen. So really positive things have come out of this process. So thank you. That is really kind of the overview of that process and those findings and recommendations. And again, Katie has that report. As she said, the executive summary was shared, but that report is available in its entirety for anybody who would like to read that. So thank you.
So I know it's a lot of information and if there are any questions, you know, we can try to answer those or you can reach out if there are additional questions as you digest the information.
I just had one question, maybe two. What statistic regarding new set of placements outside of the district being male students? Where does, how does that line up with other districts that you've worked with?
So what I can tell you is that that is not uncommon to see, right? When you think about the makeup of your district, naturally it's about a fifty-fifty split. I don't know the exact percentages of male to female here in this district. It is not uncommon to see male students receiving out-of-district placements at a greater rate than female students. However, when you start to get to a point where it's, you know, ten percent higher than the percentage of the entire population that they make up, that's where you kind of start to see a concern, if that makes sense.
And I think with that, you know, when we look at our district, we know that we are more overrepresented for students with autism and students with emotional disabilities. And we know that statistically, those two categories tend to be more represented by males versus female students. So that also plays a role into the percentage being a little bit higher as well.
Thank you.
You know, and kind of going off of that, thank you for presenting the data on out-of-placements. So I'm just curious, because I think one of the recommendations was maybe using Frost as a step, like a step up or a step down, a step down, right? And so currently, so that's not happening. They're just going immediately to whatever the school building is?
And I will say, our reintegration rate from Frost to our buildings is much higher than our private and public day schools, outside of our own public day school, reintegrating into the buildings. And again, I think some of that has to do with the fact that many of the students that were gathered, like when they come into the district, they've already been placed into and those IEP decisions have been made. But each year we do have an opportunity and so it's really looking at those and seeing, are there ways that we can try to get students back into our district? So there are students that do reintegrate, but our reintegration from private or public placement outside of the district to the buildings is a lot lower percentage than our students that are at Frost Academy.
Sure, okay.
So it is something, an area where we can look at how can we grow and what are some of the students that may be able to be successful in the district?
And you also said like the placements, the placement decisions are actually happening than like the junior high to high school transition? Okay, so, and I guess I'm only familiar with kind of the younger kids. And so I know there is like a meeting between like, you know, the, the, this school's folks and this school's. Like, so that doesn't necessarily happen, it's more of a pass or?
That meeting does happen for all of our students with IEPs, but the IEP placement decision, really like when we're coming in, we don't know the students. And so if they've already been placed, we have those conversations. And there are some students, and Ed has actually sat in on some of those meetings where we have brought them from eighth grade into one of our buildings. So that has happened, just not as much as statistically compared to other areas. I will say, I did also look at like some of the surrounding high schools and the percentage of our students that are placed out of district. And depending on the district, there are districts that we definitely have a lower percentage then and then some districts that we have a higher percentage then. Particularly high school districts tend to have more students placed out of district than those unit districts. So there's a lot of factors, it's complicated. But it is looking at, are there students that we do have that it is appropriate? Again, we do believe in a continuum of services. Some of our students really do need that level of care and support. And so we do believe that that is the appropriate placement. But are there some students that could reintegrate and find any ways to support them? And or the opposite, students that may start with us and then go to an out-of-district placement? Are there things that we could be doing in our buildings to be more inclusive so that they are not resulting in a move to an out-of-district placement?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I know there's a lot of.
I know, it's complicated, but obviously when you look at the percentages, we know that there's some growth there that can be made. And in our district, I mean, historically, years and years ago, we had a much more significant number of students that were placed out of district. And there was really a move to get a lot of students placed more in our buildings because we do value the education that we have to offer. So we have made some of those shifts, but there's just more work to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Does this participation, or does this partnership extend into the implementation phase or is it primarily?
So one of the great things is we have partnered with Empower Ed to do some of our training for our co-teachers and our inclusion facilitators. And so that partnership will continue as well as we add in some components to help consult on, you know, the implementation and what we do to implement all of the plan. So that was one of the other benefits is that we have worked with Empower Ed for some of that training and we will continue to.
And then, so I know that there's like a staged implementation process, but like, is there like a estimated, like how long it takes to kind of see the benefits or the close of the gaps?
Well, I mean, we saw with co-teaching that this year we saw that significant increase and we just started that in twenty-three, twenty-four. So again, usually it takes a couple of years to start to see that improvement. Achievement improvement takes a little bit longer because again, you don't, you're looking at how many gaps have existed prior, where are students coming into? So those increases tend to take longer than things like the indicators of LRE. Those we can see more immediately and usually about a two-year turnaround. So we hope to see again, some of that part increase. And then, you know, there are ways that we can look at some of those quality indicators as well to see if we're making a difference there. If Eddie, if you think of additional questions, please feel free to reach out.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. And also, it's great to hear that a lot of this work is also happening, you know, at the same time. And, you know, we see a lot of great strengths in all of our buildings. So great, thanks. Thank you, thank you. All right, um, let's see, any public comments?
No.
No public comments? All right, with no public comments, let's go ahead and move to the monthly status of finances with Mary.
In your packet is the April financial report. On the revenue side, you can see that those funds that are primarily property tax dependent are close to a hundred percent because the March collection of taxes has impaired. Those where you see some other, so like transportation where there's a portion that is a state claim, we'll see that is trending a little bit lower, we are in line with the budget. And then in the expenditure side, one of the things you'll see is that we kind of track a little bit less in the percentage of the year complete because in June, we have the ten-month summer payrolls. So we process the July and August payrolls. So there's like a catch-up because there's, in June, we have six, no, we have five payrolls instead of two. So that percentage will increase in June. I will entertain any questions that you have on the April financial report.
Okay, any questions? All right, with none, thank you, Mary. We'll move to instructional services with Sean.
So, here we have this, this month is the college follow-up national security house report. We bring this to you each year. Some of you have seen versions of this also in our ed committee meetings as well as we bring some of this information back when we look at our school report card data. I'd be happy to answer any questions you can have on the memo there or if you've had an opportunity to go through any of the reports and ask questions.
Any questions right now?
This is more just curious. It talked about that these rates are sometimes lower because of COVID. Like, so what is, do we know what the national trend of that is or not really?
When you, when we're talking about graduation rate?
Yeah, graduations are enough.
Well, nationally, the graduation rate is significantly lower than main town. And we can see it's reflected there also in the freshman and sophomore participation rate. However, overall, the trends that we see in our district are similar to national trends. Just not as dramatic. So for example, we saw a drop of college entrance from eighty-four percent to the high seventies. And so that has continued to drop a little bit. We also don't know if that has to do with more of our students entering trade schools or other post-secondary educational opportunities that aren't community college or a four-year college. But yes, overall, that, that trend has, it's kind of flattened out and started to start to rise back up again. If you were to look at the class of twenty-twenty, which was the class without a graduation, that first year where everything kind of screeched to a halt, their four-year graduation rate right now is about forty-two percent, which is lower than what we've seen. We were trending in a really nice direction from, you can see forty-three, forty-four. Class of twenty-nineteen was forty-seven percent in the four-year rate. So we're still waiting to see, did some students take a moment to graduate? Did they take some time off? So they kind of fall in and out sometimes to the record at where you will be at.
I'd be curious, just because you did mention trade schools, you know, how does the district look, you know, in terms of the lens as it looks at this data? Given that a lot of people now are opting for trade schools, whether it be because of the high cost of tuition or just whatever? I mean, do you look at this data any differently today as you would have maybe five, six, seven years ago?
I think it all depends, there's an element of community expectation to that.
And that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Community understanding. So I think there is a greater level of acceptance just generally because of what we've seen in the dirt of, of folks going into the trades for so long after No Trial Left Behind really made the focus college-ready. College-ready doesn't mean you necessarily have to go to college, but that was kind of the way that people interpreted that. And so I think we are seeing a level of interest in our students that's different than the past. And we've preferably added more sections of building trades than any other single course that we started to offer in the last few years. So it's definitely becoming an option for our students because they do see the low cost of entry and the immediate earnings potential in the trades.
I don't know if it was in here or, but is there data regarding, you know, what our kids are doing statistically today as opposed to maybe five, ten years ago, as opposed, as it refers to going into trade schools?
That we don't have because we don't have that reporting mechanism. So as part of No Trial Left Behind, this was, actually came out of that. So it's way back in two thousand and two now. However, we don't have that reporting mechanism with trade schools.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see just the comparison.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, let's move to our monthly update on four-year requests.
Since our last meeting, we've received three requests and we are either, we have either responded or in the process of responding to them.
All right, thank you. All right, and we have a first reading on textbooks. Sean?
Yes, so there's a first reading there for two textbooks, one for English one through four, Justin Mercy, which I'm likely familiar with, it was a proper copy of a movie a few years ago. And then also an AP Spanish literature textbook. Possibly.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead, we'll move to our consent agenda. So just so everyone knows, all of the agenda items are listed in our agenda, that's at the table. Can I get a motion on item seven, A through I?
So moved.
Thank you. Take the roll.
Iker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Heimy?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right, can I get a motion on our, the second reading on our board policies?
So moved.
Thank you, George?
Again, same process, we use press policy. Any questions there, we contacted our attorney. We adopted the press policy and the other thing we noted is with the new director of human resources, Dr. Rivera, we updated our policy to reflect that. So when she starts on July first, we're ready to vote.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, with none, let's go ahead and take the roll.
Petrus?
Aye.
Heimy?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
And Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right, we'll go ahead and move to approval of bids and awarding of contracts. Can I get a motion on A one through twenty, please? These are technology software contract renewals.
So moved.
Thank you.
Each of these contracts was discussed at the finance committee. Their cost increases range from a decrease to kind of a substantial increase. Some of the increases are based on additional seats. Some are based on market conditions. When we see a product increase over several years, we start to take a look at are there alternate products on the market that we can get a similar software at, at a cheaper cost? Sometimes there are, sometimes there aren't. And the last item is an uninterrupted power source for the server room at Main East. As you recall, we were able to save some money on software this year so we advanced purchased the uninterrupted power source to kind of take advantage of some cost savings before an increase related to tariffs. So that will come out of this year's budget. And that is something you won't see in next year's budget. We should allow us then to decrease the next year's budget. I'll entertain any questions you guys have on any of the individual software products. We try to give you a short summary of each one of them.
All right, with no questions, Jenny, can you take the roll?
Forsterling?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Heimy?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion on Huddle? So again, this is the athletic event video streaming and filming contract.
So moved.
Thank you.
Schools have used Huddle for many years. It is twenty thousand dollars per campus per year. They are recommending a three-year agreement with Huddle on students' access to this and use this for film frequently. Many, many schools are starting with Huddle.
All right, no questions. Jenny, if you could take the roll.
Petrus?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Heimy?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion on Quest? Is that the six percent increase for the next academic year?
So moved.
Thank you.
Costs and labor, they haven't increased since January of twenty-twenty-three.
All right, Jenny, if you could take the roll.
Henigan?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Heimy?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion on the intergovernmental agreement with North Cook Intermediate Services Center?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so North Cook, we've had a longstanding relationship with North Cook. They are the ones that do provide our Safe Schools Program, which is for students if they do have a significant disciplinary infraction and are not able to be, continue to be educated within our buildings. North Cook is that program through school code. They also do offer alternative learning opportunity programs, both virtual and in person. It's rare that we've had to use that, we may have had a student here or there that has been placed for that. And that's usually because we've exhausted interventions within our buildings. But luckily, we do have a lot of resources within our buildings to support students, but occasionally we have needed to use those. Both of those programs, we are only billed if we do use the programs. And then the third program that North Cook offers is the Student Advocacy ALOB. And we do have a program at East and at West. And we are not charged for those at this point. There was an upfront cost the initial year. And then it has to do with the enrollment of students. of students. So we've met those enrollments each year, and so those continue without costs to the district to support students who do need additional, like, tier-three-level supports due to risk factors that could cause school dropout. And so those are students who are identified for our support teams. So we're asking to continue those services and supports so that we can continue to support our students. I'll entertain any questions.
Yeah, and we don't see, we don't see the need to expand to Maine South because it's only at the two.
So there have been conversations about that. Because the SA ALAB program has been very new to North Cook, we've had to work through some bumps along the way. And so they added in a third school until we kind of worked through some of the pieces at East and West. We feel like it would be best to kind of work through some of that stuff and then expand. So I do foresee it could be something to expand in South in the future, but at this time, we want to try to work through the services in the other two buildings so that it's efficient, and North Cook has continued to grow and expand their services each year.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And just so folks, folks know, I also serve on the board of North, North Cook, so if there are ever any questions, I'm always happy to connect there. But yeah, they are definitely growing very, very quickly.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, Katie. Any other questions?
Hartwig?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. Okay, can I get a motion on the timeline for the 2025, 2026 budget approval between District 207 and Enser?
So moved.
Thank you.
This really just sets out the timeline for development of the budget. We will have it on display in early July, have a public hearing in August, and then do the adoption in September.
Any questions? All right, with none.
Henigan?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, Katie, um, let's see, let's move to our resolutions, IGA's, and MOUs. Can I get a motion on 11A? That's the resolution authorizing prompt payment of bills.
So moved.
Other option.
Thank you.
With the July 4th meeting, we pass this resolution, which then authorizes us to pay vendors, and then we ratify those payments at our audit for education.
Thank you. All right, Jenny?
Patrice?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion on the IGA with Park Ridge Park District as the reunification site at Centennial Fitness Center?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
So this IGA just kind of formalizes what has been a longstanding practice to use the park district facility if we were to need a reunification site. I think as we kind of outlined more our needs for reunification, Park Ridge felt that it was probably prudent for us to get a written agreement. Once this is completed, we are going to work over the summer to see if, well, Gulf Main Park District and this place's park district have any interest in formalizing those arrangements as well.
Thank you. No questions. Jenny, if you could take the roll.
Patrice?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion on the MOU Athletic Coaching Co-curricular and Extracurricular Stipend Split Request Agreement?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
We just appreciate working collaboratively with the union. What we did here is we just memorialized the procedures and process for splitting stipends to extracurricular activities, co-curricular activities. We did it for one year, and kind of see how that process works out, and we will revisit it at the end of next year.
All right. If no questions, we can take the roll.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion on the non-resident student and teacher Park Ridge Library Card Agreement?
So moved.